Love that. Which one is Brian's one?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
You can record it.
You have a photo.
Is that Bobby? Your whole life during these years will be.
I am standard.
I'll record it.
When he came here on the first day of school.
So, can I ask you a very dumb, somewhat sensitive question?
No, todavía no, he no puts it continuing.
So, welcome everybody. Glad with us or watching this recording later on. This is LEAP Two Language Academy's April Board of Trustees meeting. And glad to have you all with us today. Adam, Chair, take it away.
Great. Okay, good evening, everyone. And, um, I'm not sure why I always, uh, guess this. Do you need a motion open or I'm just gonna open?
No, if you just call us to order it's.
I'm gonna call us to order six oh seven PM for the evening. And we're gonna start with an approval of the agenda and a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, March, the March meeting minutes were circulated. You, Michael, we have a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's jump into updates.
Okay. Thank you. Um, well, we continue to exist in a COVID world. Uh, thankfully, we've experienced minimal disruptions over this past month. Staff member or two out. Uh, but, uh, mask optional policy continues to be something that families follow with their, whatever their preference is. Uh, hasn't really felt like a major factor, albeit we were out for a week and we had all of our staff members submit a negative test before they came back after, after spring break. So, we continue to monitor that. The rates are higher than they were when we last met in New York. Um, but, like I said, level of disruption or, or illness are still extremely low at LEAP and hopefully it stays that way. What do the teachers say in terms of masks? What do you think? Sixty forty masking? Seventy thirty?
I would say seventy thirty. Uh, when we first made it optional, we still, we had probably like sixty, like I would say fifty fifty. And teachers are feeling more comfortable now in, in wearing masks.
So seventy is like seventy people, uh, percent are not wearing masks?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I know we talked about a lot of linguistic issues that came up with it, so I'm just curious to teach us what you're like. Yeah. Um, so yeah, thankfully that has not been a huge focus of our lives, but we're staying vigilant. Um, enrollment for next year, so we were, oh, I even have the graph, might as well look at that. So, it's up a tick since last, uh, since a couple of weeks ago. Um, but still, uh, pretty low compared to the big highs of a couple of months ago. Um, enrollment, so we were pleased to have our annual admissions lottery on April the fifth. Lot of families tuned in online, uh, and it was our first lottery that we ran on the SchoolMint platform, which was great. Click the button, nobody has to watch Michael generate random numbers in real time, so hopefully better entertainment value. Um.
I don't know, the first ball up?
That was my favorite part.
Um, the, uh, so we continue to, uh, take families through the enrollment process. SchoolMint is an online tool that also includes enrollment, so families can upload their documents. We do have some families that, uh, request or require help with that, so our ops team has been making sure that they sit with folks or talk them through it over the phone, uh, to try to make sure that's not an obstacle, but huge efficiency gains on our end to not be emailing documents back and forth. Um, our waitlist is, is, uh, lower than I'd like it to be. It's, uh, around thirty students overall and many of them are in second grade. So, we've got single-digit waitlists at the moment in kindergarten and first, but we also continue to get applications and we continue to, to work folks through the process. Uh, and our video ads in English and Spanish on social media have been effective in driving leads, so we get a new batch of leads frequently that our, our team follows up with. So, expect to have continuing updates. I, I still feel very confident that we'll be fully enrolled for next year and, and fun to, to meet some of the families that are coming in. Um, of course, uh, we also have a good, healthy contingent of younger siblings in our kindergarten class. I wanna say more than twenty, uh, incoming kindergarteners will have an older sibling at the school, so that's, I mean, I know.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. Some, some of us at the table have lived through that before, but.
We're honest at the moment.
Yeah.
I'm just already here.
I'm just already here, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, I will keep you all posted as we keep going on that. Um, we've also partnered with a couple of local laundromats so that there's laundromat advertising for LEAP. So, if you're at the laundromat doing your laundry and you see us there, don't say I didn't tell you.
Laundry for LEAP.
Right. We just don't use that term in the final debate.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Graciela told me I was being punchy, so I'll, I'll tone it down. Um, state assessment, so I just really, uh, am so proud of our students. Tomorrow's our, our second day for most kids, the final day of the math exam after they did the English exam a couple of weeks ago. Do you wanna say anything?
Uh, I'm just, um, really happy and excited to see our kids so confident, like after the test, they're like, we rocked it! Like, we don't even need to encourage them to celebrate, they celebrate on their own. Um, we had a mock exam last week, um, and sixty-nine percent of our kids, um, mastered, were proficient. Um, that mock exam was a lot more rigorous than what they experience today. So, I have high hopes for our results.
When do we get results?
Um, that's bad.
I know it's a long wait probably, but.
Off the beaten track.
I have to share that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I.
I'm really glad the kids were happy. Where I like the kids knew what they were getting into, they were prepared, they felt good coming out, and that's, um, that's a huge step regardless of the school side. Um, you know, and, uh, and just, uh, getting to the next stage.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Cause we, um, have a lot of opt-outs this time around.
We had none.
No doubt.
I think it was also like, uh, I consider it a blessing to, um, have our first year of testing, um, be such a small cohort. I think that was really helpful. We have forty-one kids, um, so that, that was an advantage, you know, um, to be able to really target every student throughout this whole process, you know, not only academically, but also, you know, emotionally as well.
The, um, the math exam in New York, uh, can be administered in Spanish, but I think only about five of our students ended up sort of requiring that or that being the, the best option for them. So, um, yeah, so we will see. Uh, we'll talk more about academic data in a minute. Um, we will be, uh, welcoming our authorizer to LEAP Academy May nineteenth and twentieth. This is our third-year site visit, uh, an important milestone, an important exercise for us to, uh, have them see what we do. Uh, board officers, I'll be emailing you guys to coordinate the schedule, cause I think they'll wanna do a focus group, um, as part of, of that visit. Um, we've, uh, with Roberta's help have had a funder visit that had sort of a similar feel to it, where they really looked at everything and talked to a lot of people, uh, and that was a helpful, uh, practice run. And we're also working with our, uh, our consultants to do some preparation over the next few weeks, but, um, we're looking forward to that. I guess that will be, um, that will be right around our May, uh, May fourth date. Welcome, Charles, and welcome, Melody.
Let's drink a pool, you gotta start it.
Getting good, yeah.
I was wondering, looking at, you know, here.
All the way from, uh, from home, right? Um, all right, as we promised, uh, last month, uh, we have a full slate of enrichment. I wanna express my appreciation for all the secret readers. Uh, Maho, I know you're a secret reader. We've got a number of parents come in and, uh, read to the kids as a surprise, which has been really fun. Uh, but we're also gonna be doing, um, some other activities, right?
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're definitely looking forward to field trips, um, they will be happening in the next two or three weeks, um, per grade level. We have third graders going to see The Lion King in June.
What?
We're excited about that. And our spelling bee, so every class is gonna have their own spelling bee in Spanish and English, um, and then we're gonna have our tournaments here in this room per grade level. So, we'll have a Spanish winner, an English winner, uh, and our academic contest, we're still working on that, but we're gonna do a math contest, that's still in the process of, of being planned right now.
Yeah.
I, I will volunteer for The Lion King on Chevron.
If I'm available.
Everybody wants to go, I'm like, we can't leave the, we can't leave the building with no staff!
Right. Um, no, that was a great partnership, uh, discount tickets that our, our dance teacher helped us procure, and it's just a well-deserved reward.
Absolutely.
Um, we are getting ready for summer school and summer camp, um, and so we're gonna have details for our families, more details for our families about that soon. They say more details because, uh, we are pursuing the funding opportunities that's been in the headlines, uh, from different philanthropies, including the Bloomberg Foundation, who are supporting charter schools, summer learning. So, we're, we're appreciative of that chance and we hope to have some more clarity in the next couple of weeks, but as we did last year, the basic approach is the same. Uh, it's a, a strand of, uh, academic support for students who are recommended for that, um, at no cost to the family, uh, as well as, uh, summer day camp with all kinds of enrichment activities. Um, and those two groups sort of come together in the afternoon, so everybody gets at least some enrichment during the day. So, it's a big success last summer, and so we're trying to build on that for this year. Um, and I think we should have, um, gosh, more than a hundred kids in the school alone and maybe another eighty or so in the campus. So, um, all right, on, on academics, so we had a chance to do a deep dive with, uh, our academic committee last week. Uh, we also shared some, uh, some figures, some score reports with the full board in our pre-reads, so if anyone wants to sort of break those down outside of the meeting, we're, we're totally happy to do that. Um, but I just wanted to call out a few highlights. Um, so our math scores are showing growth, I mean, that's the, the big, most important thing. Uh, and particularly in third grade, we saw a hundred percent of our students meeting their goals in math and seventy-six percent meeting their goals in ELA. That's from the fall to the winter, and then we'll administer again in, at the end of the year. Um, the key thing for me is that, uh, what we're doing in third grade, we are working on doing across all grade levels. So, we feel like this is some proof of traction, some proof of success, whether it's, right, data-driven.
Data-driven.
Instruction, you know, using the results of assessments to, to target what kids need to work on, um, or, you know, just the style of instructional planning. So, these growth numbers reflect the work of our whole staff in this building, but, you know, we, we especially feel like there's some, some proof of concept that, right, as, as we look at what's going on in, in third grade, in particular kindergarten are also a very, uh, high-performing grade. Um, and we're also seeing, uh, you know, some movement in Spanish, not as much as we'd like, but most of our kids are, are moving in Spanish and about a third of them are, are moving pretty quickly to step levels since the fall. Um, we also noticed, going back to the other assessment for a moment, that although they didn't have higher test scores, students whose home language is Spanish were, uh, growing in English faster than the native English kids. And so, despite it being a ninety percent Spanish school day in kindergarten, the premise of our school was that, you know, you can still teach kids English because they're getting so much language and we can use the, the English class effectively. So, I feel like we're, we're seeing evidence with that, that there's some truth to that, which is really nice to see, uh, part of our, part of our mission. Um, and I'm sure there's some questions about this, but last thing I would just summarize is, uh, Joanna, Graciela, the team have been really working hard to get ready for next year. Summer training, full month of teacher training before the kids arrive, planning, you know, all the tools we've been rolling out this year, getting those totally tight for the new cohort coming in, and then doing a lot of hiring for, uh, our fourth grade team, uh, to replace some roles that are opening up on the other grades and also the additional associate teachers that we're gonna have as part of our school for next year. So, a lot of time hiring, a lot of time interviewing, and that's gonna be a huge push, I think, through the end of the year, but that's what we're up to. So, as you guys know, I like to lay it out and then make Joanna take the tough questions, so if there are any. I have at least one question. Yeah. Um, these numbers are great, um, but how do they compare to, to grade level achievement? So, I think, you, well, I'm sorry. We, we still have most students, well, let me speak to ELA, cause we've been seeing actually so much growth in math that I, I, I'm not as confident, I know exactly where we are in math. In ELA, we definitely have most students still not at grade level. Okay. And, um, and I think that the focus on growth for us is to make sure that we're tracking towards getting everyone there, and so the, the same timeline that I've shared before about, you know, what it means for this year and then where we can expect to be next year, we're still in that place. I don't wanna overstate that math, I'm, I'm feeling optimistic. And of course, the, uh, even the projections that we shared in the pre-reads are projections, right? They're guesses. We don't know how the state test is gonna land or, you know, what everything, what all was captured, but, um, we're gonna continue, you know, climbing that mountain, you know, going ahead to next year. Good. No, I, and, and like, I also, it, it sort of picked my ears up that only five students wanted to do the math in Spanish. And I'm just curious why you think that, and especially if there are a big number of full-time Spanish speakers. Um, I know you, I have some guesses, but I'd like to hear why you think that, that may be. Can I speak to that, Graciela?
Sure. Um, because students are receiving the fifty fifty, uh, in, in terms of third grade in their instruction, many of our children, I would say predominantly, most of our third grade students are English language learners, so not Spanish language learners. However, there has been a significant increase in students' ability in terms of comprehension in English. When it comes to mathematics, they were demonstrating more le, higher levels of acquisition in terms of the skills and the word problems. So, because of the additional support that they've been receiving in terms of test prep for ELA and all of the English reading that they were doing, a lot of them had become very comfortable with the English that they were learning in practice for the English Language Arts exam and therefore transferred those skills into mathematics and felt more at ease working in the English language in mathematics versus the Spanish language. There are some mathematical terms that don't transfer and translate directly from English to Spanish or Spanish to English, and as a result, the children felt more comfortable performing in math, in English.
They've also had math in English all year. Well, that was my next question.
That's the big, that's, mm-hmm. And also, we had, um, three mock exams and we, and plus quizzes and ATs that we had, and those students had practice in both languages, and we had the data to prove that they were performing better when they were, when we were administering the exam in their language.
So, so, yeah. It's a sixty forty, I think, third grade back.
Yeah.
So, it's the majority of their days in Spanish, but all of their math has been in English.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I was supposed to jump into that. So, in third grade, they were not at fifty fifty, they were at sixty forty. Okay, great.
Sixty forty. Sorry.
Okay, no, no, just checking.
I'm like, fourth grade.
Just checking.
Yeah. Sixty forty, sorry.
Yeah. We were in a staff meeting the other day and talked about the fourth grade team, and then we realized, oh yeah, they're not here yet. We're, we're still in. So.
So, I think something that's really exciting about the last, like, couple of months is again what you said about it's making progress in the practices that you're applying in the targeted area, you're seeing growth, and it makes me think about Spanish and especially as we shift out of test prep season and going into like the planning for next year, with both you starting from the summer and the team starting from the summer. I wonder what it looks like to do like that level, having lived, like, having lived like the six weeks before, um, before a state exam of like really targeted social, emotional support, academic support, whatever, but how, what would it look like, like a sustainable year-long version of that around Spanish if we're seeing our Spanish language level further behind? I am not as familiar in that, cause I'm only taught in English speaking schools, but I'd be curious, applying some of so similar practices?
Yeah, to encourage that side of it, and, and I'm also curious how we get to, uh, a more Spanish dominant split over, over time.
Really, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but something Joanna said at the accountability meeting was really eye-opening for me, was that you had started to see increased achievement among some of the Spanish speakers, and I didn't know if it's Spanish speakers or EL students, or maybe it was both, but that to me kind of reinforces the whole premise of dual-language education. At an early age, some of these kids are doing better through the acquisition of Spanish that then gets transferred to English by third grade, so I was very happy to hear that.
Selling in English is a great, great data point, and, and that was exactly what you wanna hear, right? I'm, I'm sort of just more curious how we continue to develop all that, right? So, it's like, how do we make sure there's more immersion in Spanish that, you know, they're comfortable in both languages, not other kids, you know, so it's not as simple as I want it to be.
And I know we do guided reading in Spanish, right?
Yeah, we all, we rotate, we alternate weeks, lectura guiada, guided reading.
But like the level of like goal setting, difference, all this, that stuff that I'm sure you guys have done in, for the test prep, like what's the?
And I think part of it, yeah, yeah, that's the goal. And part of it too is that a lot of the tools, right, like you said, right? A lot of the tools, a lot of the practices, like, we are also right now, um, translating. Like, right now, we did, we, we had to reset guided reading, and all of those tools and all of those resources are in English. So, we got Yarita right now, like, translating our criteria for successful guided reading for lectura guiada, so it's definitely a process. Uh, we have moved faster in providing resources and all of training in English, right? And that definitely is the goal for us to start, which we're doing, we're doing with lectura guiada. So, like, our step trainers came to observe K two today, and I didn't have them observe guided reading, I had them observe lectura guiada, because the framework is the same, but I wanna start honing in more on, you know, how are we transferring those practices into the Eng, into the Spanish, um, areas?
Yeah, Melody was gonna say something.
Yeah, English is sixty percent this year for third graders, right? What about next?
No, no.
No.
Spanish sixty. What about next year?
It'll be fifty fifty.
In fourth grade.
That, that's not good, it's fifty fifty.
No, it starts at ninety ten with ninety percent Spanish in kindergarten, ten percent, uh, English, and then it shifts by ten. So, in first grade, it's eighty twenty, then seventy thirty, and so on.
Okay, cause I feel like my son was doing better in second grade for both English and Spanish, and now he's doing bad in Spanish, and English is not so good. Maybe it's just me. I felt he was performing a lot better last year.
In Spanish?
In Spanish and English for writing, I thought. And this year, I don't feel it's the same.
Certainly, one, one person is not.
Yeah, only one person.
Not that kid, and all children are different, but that, I think, you know.
I mean, he does have eyes, maybe that.
You obviously know them. You should take it.
I don't know.
I think you should take it up, but, uh, I'm not sure it's indicative of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I'd definitely like to explore that more.
I look at, I look at his data.
Look at his data, exactly. Yeah.
And I think one of our selling points, the tool is bilingual, and it's developing bilingual children, so it's not just the Spanish speakers learning the English, but also the English speakers learning Spanish, and particularly as the language is both English.
And the Spanish speakers, reading and writing.
Exactly, in both. It, it needs to, we need to make sure that, that they're both. Exactly, because it's a, it's a focus in testing, but that's, I think, that's why Emily was bringing that up in terms of like focusing on Spanish, one for testing.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's just like, both teams on mid-year this year, they're bringing in a lot of different tools and techniques, being familiar with a lot of them. I'm listening, as we think, I'm, as we're listening, I'm thinking about like, oh, how would I then translate that to move that type of role in Spanish? And there's not exactly the same amount of resources out there, they're creating a lot.
Yes.
And then maybe also, I know we're like partnering with the language, uh, coming in, so maybe they can give additional support, cause I think this is translatable and accelerate Spanish acquisition specifically.
Yeah.
So, we've already begun that pro, beginning, the, the foundation steps of that process, and that is that firstly, we are now in a place where, um, with Diana Ferreira's, uh, support, we are, um, identifying every child's L one and L two, which is some, which is data that we did not have accessible to us in the past. So, in order for us to truly hone in on language and to make that boost occur in terms of the Spanish language acquisition, it has to start there, identifying all our L one and L twos across the board. Then, honing down even deeper and digging deeper into the data and taking a look at our special education population and our intervention population to dissect the data to determine whether what we are acknowledging are academic deficits or language deficits that are being perceived as academic deficit. So, we're literally, like, it's the onion, and we are now beginning to peel back those layers so that we can get to the bottom to work our way up. So, we can't talk strategy and skill development in terms of, you know, transferring the language and, and boosting up our Spanish language until we first can identify where we are, so what the state of our school currently is and across grade levels in each of those subgroups, and then, from there, we'll be able to then strategize on boosting.
How will you identify your L ones and L twos and when in the critical year?
And, uh, so that, so we're, yeah, so we're doing that right now, um, just like, um, our data management system also, like, we didn't have one, now we have one. So, we are working on the technical stuff for that system, and we're working on identifying our Ls. Um, we have the NICE slot, and Diana Ferreira is like a rock star. She has went above and beyond, and we are testing this week, we're testing all the way to the end of May, um, and we wanna have that, right? Because we cannot move to what Emily was saying until we get everyone to be classified accurately, right? Um, we also, not only that, but also our IEP meetings, we have, what, fifty-five kids with IEPs right now? And we had sixty-three, and we have forty IEP meetings in the month of March, rectifying our, our, making sure that everyone's classified and everyone's getting their services and all of that. So, all of that is, is, is being in the, we're working on all of that now, so like that we can launch because we have all the accurate data and we've identified what all our kids need.
Michael and I were doing, dealing with and, and struggling with this in the early years. Uh, most schools, as you know, probably will identify the L ones and the L twos right after registration. You can't do it before, cause it, it's perceived as filtering out kids. But afterwards, and between the start of school, you can identify the L ones and the L twos, and many schools I interviewed were doing it with teachers actually taking, you know, parent interviews, how you doing?
I love it.
And then they're able to get the data in advance of starting school. So, then you guys know, you know, what is the linguistic balance of each classroom? Why have sixty percent kids that are Spanish speakers or the other way around? And that's an important factor.
We currently have, we currently have the collection of the home language surveys as a standard step in the enrollment process. However, what Diana and I were discussing most recently is the need to intervene there. In any school that I've ever been in, I've always conducted the interviews instead of having someone from the operations department do that for that reason, because you have that personal communication with families, you speak to the parent, you have the, I interview the children in addition to the parents to further determine whether or not they need to be tested with an NISATEL, right? Following that, once you know who your L twos are, then those children are administered in NISATEL. Some of the work that I, Diana has, uh, discovered is that there were children that are in need of being tested, so now we're rectifying all of that, getting everything in order, and so come next year, we should have that, those numbers.
Maybe the last point I'll just make is, um, we're also mindful of, you know, the immersion aspect of what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So, things like the Spanish spelling bee, things like, you know, guided reading and just reminders to staff, like, we want to hear Spanish in the hallways and on the playgrounds. We don't chase after kids being the language police, but we chase after adults, right? Making sure that they're embodying that, and that's something that you always need to remind people about, so. Just to help me understand a little bit, so, but also socially among children, peers on their own independently, cause that, cause these children.
Just to help me understand a little bit, so, but also socially among children here on their own independently, because that, because these children are operating inside of an academic construct and a pedagogy, but you know, they live in a world, right? So when, what do you hear, how do you sense children in the hallways and the playtime, independent of the percentage of a given grade year? Does it seem to track with what's happening at their grade level? Or do you see children falling to a more comfortable household language with each other, or is it just all over the map?
It's all over them, like I think there's a, I think it's all over the map. Um I I wouldn't say that because uh third grade is sixty, sixty forty, that they're speaking more, you know, English. That's not, that's not happening, like, uh it's what they feel comfortable with. Um so we're hearing whatever they're comfortable with, that's what they're gonna speak. And one of the things that um the team that we had discussed on the um instructional team is like making, like even having some, like, and I don't want to be too strict, like I want kids to talk in their language, but like even during lunch next year, like for teachers to say, you know what, let's speak Spanish, like today's a Spanish day, to talk Spanish during lunch. Like it's not only the allocation for the language for the subject areas, but that we are also encouraging our kids um to speak, you know, the lang- language that they don't feel the most comfortable speaking. Um so even during lunch, like we'll come up with some games or something, say, this is a Spanish day, this is an English day, so we're gonna do all of that.
Some sort of softer touches, but still.
Particularly in the grades where Spanish is then diminished in terms of percentage, you can add that as an extra.
Yeah, and the media too, what they're watching sometimes at their uh for their Rita sometimes, since I know that when it's raining out, they end up staying and off, off sometimes watching stuff. This should keep that in mind too.
Mm-hmm.
Um you mentioned translation of materials and how they're not as available in Spanish. Um you were talking about the reading materials? Uh, not that, but the strategies don't translate, do they? Because it's.
I'm sorry, I'm answering.
It's, it's.
It's okay.
No passing here.
I'm thinking about both, both the texts and the strategies, just because the strategies for teaching reading in English are different from the best practice strategies for teaching reading in Spanish.
Well, so some are and some aren't, right? So there's, there's, there's one thing that has to do with literacy and specifics of how the language works. But then there's other things, like how do you run a small group reading session, which doesn't have to be too different, right? So, so.
I should be saying, I'm sorry, I tried to jump in like six times.
Well, we have, we have you all on the board for a reason.
So like, it's a small group discussion, and the the practice is like, ask open-ended questions to extend student thinking. So there's like Al's and the P's on that, that have been developed in the like, whatever, last fifteen years, and they're all predominantly in English. Like these practice sessions are like, ask why, ask how, and like have them show you the evidence, so that's a transferable thing, but they're.
Now phonetically, grammatically, it's a diferente porque ya, it's uh, it's different, but we're talking about like instructional practices.
And text?
Text.
No, we we have our like, we have our Spanish texts and then we have our our English texts.
It's one of the greatest challenges into a language education in America is that the strategy, the methodology, the pedagogy is not translated. Uh or we used to say adapted, because the translations are usually not good. Um I I was always commenting to the folks here that there's an instruction that says, "Demás." Well, that's a new English language idiom, tell me more.
Mm-hmm.
And that's part of what I'm noticing.
And it doesn't translate well.
That's part of what I'm noticing in some of the, some of the homework seems, I'm not, not that Lisa's already doing it, but it seems translated in terms of like there, there's nuance in terms of like, and this is part of what, anyway, sorry, it's.
We we've talked about this some of the long.
Exactly, and.
We 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 try to prioritize as authentic of materials as as we can have. Some of the curriculum, I think that is a valid critique, that it, at the end of the day, feels a little translated in spots, or maybe more than a little.
You're saying to a, to a native Spanish reader, reading, reading this maybe grammatically, pardon you, correct?
It's not just that.
But it's not culturally.
There is, there's some of that, but there's also, it's kind of like what the rest of us are saying, as a native speaker, you just don't come up with that.
Right.
That is not what you would say, you would say something completely different, so the sentence would be completely different.
Right.
Um and 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 the thing is that when you rely a lot on tra- on translated text, or texts are generated in one language and then translated, even if they're translated very well, then the people who are learning with that are gonna speak like that, they're gonna speak trans- with with sounds, twenty-to-speaker translator. And I hear that, for example, with Bob, she speaks in what sounds translated, the words are in Spanish, but she's speaking English.
It's the biggest challenge of doing.
Yes, yes.
I think that's where the training comes in.
And it's not just about word order, it's the things that she comes up with.
Yeah, it's fantastic, you can see ideas.
And it's just that, but like it's, it's, we're moving in a direction, but it's just something to be mindful with a lot of the.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm.
I mean, you can say, you can, you can have four teachers in the school. Una de Colombia, una de Peru, una de Puerto Rico, una de Santo Domingo, tú le dices que traduzca algo y va a haber una, va a haber diferencia.
Yes, absolutely.
Pero no significa que está mal, ahora si están escri- si están hablando o leyendo como si están traduciendo inglés, ya eso es diferente. Pero también hay que, hay diferentes, diferentes palabras que significan lo mismo, now if it's not grammatically correct, that's a different story, right?
Yeah, no, that's, that's different, it's more a matter of like, wish there were a way to, and this is something that was mentioned, like we're talking about before school started, that we're gonna try to get texts, texts that were not translated.
Well, I think the text they're not translating, it's more the directions or the, or do we have a lot of.
And we're starting to learn about that too, because we do have some great Spanish texts, but for example, reading A to Z, we have the English texts that teachers do use for guided reading, and we have like Lifelong Readers, that program that we use as a resource, but we won't use the Spanish texts for reading A to Z because they sound exactly like each other, those books are terrible. So we wouldn't use those, pero también, I'm also learning, right? Because I never used a Spanish book from reading A to Z, I had to go and look at it and say, this is not.
So I think, I think it's definitely safe to say, as we're doing our PD in dual language this spring, we talk to our consultant as we do our planning, this is a layer we can definitely commit to be, you know, a lens to be applying to that.
You know, and like training for leaders and all of that.
Yeah, but but also, you know, curriculum review.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's a question, not, I think this is more like, this is actually not about digging into the actual results so much, or even like the way we're getting there. With respect to the the board visit and also just our metrics, seeing that renewal is coming, um I think it, I just want to call out, I think that we, I am, I feel very excited to see the level of growth, given the context of where the, you know, the whole world is in, uh and seeing those results come through. So I think, I feel heartened knowing that like sort of, it's like self-serving and we have that data, because I think it'll, we have the benefit, even though it's complicated and we have a lot more subgroups to sort of think through.
Yes, yes.
It is though even more um easy to create a narrative and present data to authorize it about the subgroups and their performance and seeing them. Because we're able to like see these different populations and then like have it serve the ultimate mission of the school. So I'm really excited that even though it's not perfect, that we are like doing the right work.
Doing the right.
I, for me, my eye is already on renewal and thinking about how like those results and how we can continue to do that. And so like, in spite of all the challenges that, you know, whether it be like within the school, but also in the context of the world, and just what we're doing, and seeing those results, I'm really happy about it.
I too.
Yeah.
We have the all-day PD last week, and I said it's our journey towards excellence, not there, our journey.
My, my internet failed for just a moment, but.
I think all of it. Here's a, here's a thing yet from a regular DOE school, my kids are English speakers learning English, and they come home with these little booklets that clearly were written in Canada or English. And it's like, well, is the Lori going by with the buns?
That's it.
I'm like, you live in Brooklyn! So this is kind of, I'm sorry. Living in Brooklyn is not an excuse to speak like you don't want to.
We have to say Lori.
We can fight about this all blind, David. To that sensitivity when you're used to hearing your child's language, and then feeling them acquire something from outside, not just your household, but your sensibility, and it it hits the ear very strangely, doesn't it? Now, he's learning words and finally speaking, yay! I'm not complaining, but I'm acknowledging it, it's, I think this is a challenge in every setting, but particularly here, there's a higher, a higher obligation, but it sounds like you're meeting it. Like first you're aware of it, and then you're taking specific steps to meet it, which has to speak well to any outside. I'm the closest thing in this room to a casual outside server. I may claim to that, uh, because I'm not from an academic background, uh, but but what I hear is starting, is feels very strong, so thank you.
Appreciate that, David, okay, I'm gonna.
Hopefully I did all that while the recording was.
I think we settled it while the recording was. We got you. Um. Okay.
Can I tell a joke?
What's that?
Can I tell a joke while you're.
Go for it.
I use that for.
I asked Michael if I could do this, this is, this is germane to our conversation. My grandfather, my abuelo Fernando, used to tell me a a story about when he was immigrating to the United States and Coca-Cola had their new, brand-new Coca-Cola machines, and you would put in your money, and back then it was only ten cents. Now, everybody knows in this country that ten cents is also called a dime, so the the machine said dime. Well, my grandfather went up to the machine, he says, "Quiero una Coca-Cola."
Oh, dime.
And done.
I'm gonna be kidding.
You're gonna wear this, right?
No, I'm, 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 I got some Alice's jokes that I copied.
Just to add to this, yes, my dad also didn't immigrate here, and he didn't know any English, so he was shoveling the snow, and he needed a shovel, he didn't know how to say shovel. So he went to, so he's like, I need a big spoon.
Yeah. You use your, you use your linguistic resources to communicate, right?
And then you add to your account. The following used to say, English speaks the best language, been here a long distance.
All right, well, turning to, turning to new business then, um couple of, well, one, one quick item and and one more fun item. Um so we previously asked you all to approve a set of dates, which which you did, uh for next school year's academic calendar. Uh we did not have all of the relevant comparison dates, they had not all been released yet. And one thing that we noticed uh was that although we had scheduled our spring break for April, the week of April tenth, twenty twenty-three, that would put our kids coming back to school and then right into state testing in our critical, you know, year four. So we talked it over with the academic committee, and and my recommendation, our recommendation is that we actually move that up one week earlier to April the third, um so that our kids have a little bit more time to get ready. Um if uh we were talking earlier about religious holidays, this would essentially be moving it from the week after Catholic Easter to the week before. Um and it would unfortunately mean that it would be another year in which we didn't exactly align to the New York City DOE calendar, which I know is relevant to some families. But I do think it's a very important uh sequence in a very important year. So I would like to put this for for the board's consideration, as one change to our academic calendar before we go and release it to all the families and everybody.
Is that, is that the the one and only change that was discussed before?
Yeah.
Is that because I've taken rid of holidaying the twenty-three uh year, that's gonna be before Holy Week, is that true?
This would be Holy Week leading up to.
Oh, so it would be, okay.
So the way was this year.
The way of this year, instead of moving to the week after Easter.
I mean, I think that makes sense when you have a population, you have, but the DOE thing is, is, you know, maybe an issue about kids at other schools or jobs, you know, it's lazy, but. But I think it's consistent with what you've done.
Yeah, and it's, and it seems like from what we're talking about, it seems better for testing to.
Well, I think that's the reasoning.
Yeah, no, exactly, so.
Yeah, nobody wants to read mysteries why the DOE continues to set people up for failure.
Well, because they're on the holidays.
I mean, you come back from a time off and you're like, all right, let's start to take tests.
The DOE has other holidays, that's a thing, considering you have a large, largely Catholic population, it's easier to say, okay, how, Holy Week? Then uh when you're DOE in New York City, you don't have that luxury. But yeah, I hear you.
We, we will need to vote on it, but I'll, I'll ask you all to just wait a moment.
I don't think we're online.
Yeah, I'm, I'm switching to my, my hotspot.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there, that's still online, no?
No, I think, well, this one's moving, but it's not, like, are we online?
Yes, you are all still online.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Not the answer I was looking for, but.
But good to know.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, um so my feed is off, but we weren't interrupted, I believe, yeah, we're still recording, so we're good. So, um Charles, did I hear you making a motion?
Yes, I moved to move the spring break to suggested dates.
All right, David?
Hi.
And that was seconded by Alejandro, thank you both. Um. I was, I thought it was so strange people would read things into the record, and then we now live in a world of Zoom transcription, and that's what we do, we're, we're all in Congress or something. Um, okay, thank you for that. Um so the other bit of new business that we had on our um meeting tonight, I don't think, Roberto, we have anything to approve on real estate?
No, um we are preparing the sublease.
Okay.
That we had agreed we would get some time ago, and I just literally just checked my phone, and the attorney has said he will have it tonight.
Yeah.
So that's the update.
Um but I think we can go ahead and announce, um because we'll be announcing by email this week, so we might as well talk about it a little bit if no board member minds. Um so, uh to make this official, we are expanding in Sunset Park for next year. So with the the help of landlord uh in the neighborhood, with the help of our Friends of Leave organization, um we've secured a a three-year uh commitment to go into this space that's currently occupied by our friends at Brooklyn Rise Charter School. They're going to be moving elsewhere in District Fifteen, and so we're gonna be moving in. Uh and so, uh you know, we've got ten thousand square feet, seven nice big classrooms, some other multipurpose rooms, security, nursing, all that sort of thing. Um and our plan for next year is to have our third and fourth grade scholars move uh essentially across the street where they can have their little upper campus. Um and um I hasten to, oh, and so if you're not familiar with this building, it's it's literally like on the next block, you can see on the Google map here. Um but I hasten to add that um for families of third and fourth graders, or maybe if you have kids in those grades and also younger students, um we are fully making all operational plans to make that a smooth transition. So no change to the special subjects your child will get, no change to recess, bus service, meal service, nursing, security, all those things will be in place and coordinated. Um we will likely have a bit of a um, a staggered schedule in the afternoon, so that if you need to pick up a child from one and then walk and pick up another child, you can do that. Um and we're coordinating with all the the city agencies and everything else. But this is a space, it's obviously been in use as a charter school, it's renovated just a few years ago, it's zoned for school use, it's wired. And uh so we're gonna replace some signs and put up some paint, put in our technology and and go from there. So really excited, the other, the other nice thing for next year anyway, is that it'll give us a little bit more elbow room in this space. So we'll be able to dedicate, um there's a big classroom outside of what's now my office, that'll become a library space, you know, and we'll have just a little bit more room, at least for that year. And then um as the board knows, we're also continuing to plan for a permanent upper campus and looking at a lot of different variations of that. But we were fortunate to have this opportunity, uh and I finally would just add, uh our our colleagues at Brooklyn Rise have not had an easy time of it in the real estate world, and they've been extremely gracious as we've been sort of planning this, so I just want to publicly thank them for that. They run a terrific school and um, you know, we wish them every success. So we will be sharing that officially with families, but wanted to kind of make that announcement tonight, so, and thank you, Rivera, for all your work together.
Well, our, our new landlord there is.
Well, our, our new landlord there is, he's a good man and helpful to, yeah, he will get the place ready and for us by our opening day.
Yeah.
With our leaf colors and our leaf signs and everything.
The, the after-school program will continue to be at this building. So, each day, the kids who are across the street are participating in after-school, come over here, and so after-school pickup will be here. All right?
Well, Grandpa, do you spend any time with senior center on the other floor of that building?
Um, the landlord has mentioned it to them that we're gonna be moving in there, but I have not personally met them. My goal is to meet the senior center.
Walk over.
I would love to go with you.
As far as my, you know, the neighbors, I mean, we gotta be good neighbors, and also where, where my mind is sleeping, sorry, is the, the opportunity for enrichment and cultural contact, and, you know, that's a rock in senior center, I'm gonna tell you, and the food is good.
Oh, I will be there.
Keep the kids away from the pool table, but other than that, I, I.
Meeting there.
Oh, no, but there's a real, there's a real.
Old table, but significant.
Yeah.
Cultural, uh, cross-generational cultural contact being co-located in that building.
Beautiful.
It's a rare, it's a rare thing to point to as a.
And involving in the community, which is good for all the things, all the things, yeah.
Will you help set that up, and you and I can do that together?
What?
And we'll get Michael and whoever you want to go.
All right. So, we'll, we will be.
Thank you, David.
Sharing with our families full academic calendar, this news, and also more detail soon about the, about the summer school and summer camp in the next, in the next days.
Are you planning any family tours or anything before?
Oh, yeah, we've been having, oh, in terms of this space?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have yet to coordinate when that will be possible, but the plan is if your child is moving to this building, that we'll arrange a summertime visit and tour so you can see. It's, it's nicely laid out. It's essentially one square hallway with rooms around the outside, and they're ni, they're bigger than most of our classrooms here. So.
Love that.
Yeah, so that should be nice. All right, so I think we want to turn now to some committee reports, and our friend Bob has been patiently waiting.
In his solid hours, yeah.
Yes, as we work on this location. So.
That was Shvet's while we waited.
We circulated the.
That was a Hebrew academy. She does Shvet. Yiddish Academy.
You're gonna make me.
Hebrew characters.
David. Bob, would you like to share some updates, or can you just enable screen sharing, Michael? Yes. He insists.
Thank you. So, I just pulled up our financials in the dashboard up on your screens. I think something to just keep in your mind is we are, these financials are as of the end of March, so that is three-quarters of the way through the year. As we continue to kind of normally look at the same graphs that we present to this board every month, you'll see our current ratio and our total margin are both, you know, in a pretty good spot above the SED benchmark threshold. Days of cash for us historically has been cyclical. We're at 20. Our benchmark is 30. We are set to receive $1.2 million in our next round of per pupil funding, which will put us well above this mark probably tomorrow morning. And then the debt-to-asset ratio, we discussed this at length, I think, with the finance committee last evening. Our being outside of this metric is, again, the result of what our auditors recommended we do with our facility lease. The state is grappling right now on how to, given the accounting treatment that all schools are going to be looking wildly out of line on this metric, they are evaluating how to assess it going forward. Earlier this month, we submitted our sixth and final per pupil invoice. You'll see in May, we moved to 315 students, which is indicative of a drop of two general education students from the prior reporting period. The next time we report data to the state as it relates to enrollment will be really how we ended the year. That is called the reconciliation invoice, and that is done basically in August. So, there might be some small changes between now and then, but for all intents and purposes, this is our year-end enrollment as it's, as reported to the state. You'll see no change in our special education funding here as well. And the per pupil billing cycle is very reflective, again, of just how we've reported our gen ed and our spread for enrollment. Moving on to the actual financials, again, we are 75% of the way through the year. Our total revenue year-to-date is $6.5 million versus a budgeted amount of a little bit more than 8.7. This leaves us to draw down about 25% over the remaining three months. On the salaries and benefits side, we continue to have project about six figures in savings, again, related to unfilled positions and staff attrition, and some excess savings related to benefits enrollment, like health and retirement planning. On the other-than-personnel side, we have $2.3 million in expenses versus about $3.1 million annualized. So, again, very much in line with how we expect to be running all in on the OTP side year-to-date. And then lastly, just net surplus, this bottom-line figure, our year-to-date surplus is $321,000, which is, this number has kind of fluctuated, I think, between 250 and $400,000 over the last, like, four or five months, so very much in line with that. And we are projecting about a $297,000 surplus on the year. There is a little bit of upside that we do anticipate on this, just related to some students that we are billing out of district for. When I say out of district, these two students live in Bethpage, New York, and Bethpage is obligated to pay us for educating these kids. So, we've been in contact with their home district, and they owe us about $37,000 or $38,000 for the year. And additionally, we've received some one-time grant revenue totaling $18,000. So, as soon as the state controller signs off on that contract, we will be able to recognize that revenue. On the balance sheet, again, I think similarly with how we've been running, we closed the month with about $450,000 of cash on hand. Again, we should be getting a cash infusion tomorrow morning. And then on the accounts receivable side, we're seeing an uptick on where we closed last year. This is the result of us carrying a lot more federal revenue that we are accruing for, namely through the stimulus grants, which will be paid out. And we are preparing and will submit a set of grant claims probably by the end of this week. No other movement that really jumps off the page that you haven't seen in prior months before on the balance sheet. And yeah, school continues to be in good financial health. And then just an update on our fiscal year '23 budgets. We are working to finalize that document now. There are a lot of moving pieces on that. We do know what the state per pupil rate will be in New York for next year, so we'll, we're able to lock that in. But I, I think the biggest lever for all charter schools this year is what to do with teacher compensation. This is an in-between year for the bi-annual charter school survey that's administered to all the CMOs and standalone charters across the state, and the state and the city union contract is set to expire in September, so there's no salary scale to draw from as well. So, we are level-setting on teacher comp and other-than-personnel expenses, and do anticipate being able to present that to the board next month. I will leave it to, absent of any questions, I will leave it to David and Michael to editorialize.
Thanks, Bob. Look, I, I, I think that we covered most of this in the finance committee last night. I think that the issues raised that are salient for everybody are, you know, that despite the fact that the cash flow is gonna be kind of tight, there's some upside to it, and, and we've invested in, in personnel and in, in, in the building. So, you know, we, we did the things we wanted to do. I've asked Bob also to speak very unkindly to our accounting firm about the capital lease change, because it does not cease to make me very angry, I thought myself there, among other things. But otherwise, the ratios look good, and, and I think aside from the cash being tight, they won't be initiating through the end of the year, we walked through some of the projected expenditures that remain in the last quarter. I think some of them will be lower on the ones that are projected, but I also think there are some unprojected costs that will need to be met, mostly related to moving across the street. And, and when we have a better handle on that, I think we'll be able to, to, to report back on what that really looks like, but I'm not concerned about it from a ability to get it done perspective. I think the issue will be, you know, how tight it may get through that. But then again, we add a lot of students next year, and, and, and we're well-prepared for that, and we've been, I'm at least starting to wade through that, that budget to make sure that we're well-prepared for that. It looks like we very much are. So, again, thank you, Bob, and, and look, I, I, I think we're, we continue to do the things that are in line with what we've talked about, right? Investing in the personnel and the, and the building to make sure that we're as strong as we can be.
Thank you, David.
I just had a question, Bob. I think we brought this up before in one of the committee meetings regarding this capitalization of the lease, and to David, it's a good point. Is there any need for us to go on the record, have Michael write a report, write a letter to the authorizer, particularly in advance of their visit, that just says, hey, everything David said, put it in a letter, just so that we're on the record, and it's clear to them that this one data point is not our doing, but rather the doing of you guys? And so.
I can, I can take that.
Also, our audit is clear to that point, that they asked us to do it. So, like, I'm not worried about the authorizer thinking we've done something to be out of ratio.
I, I did ask Bob for some language we could put in our self-assessment about this point. So, what they got ahead of this site visit does mention that. I also included it as a point that our board would like to discuss.
Very good, very good.
Because it sounds like that's, that's the case.
That's what's needed.
My guess for everyone, my guess is that our liaison is not gonna probably have much of a technical opinion about this, but she can bring it to the right person in the office.
I just want to minimize the number of flags that they're seeing.
Yep.
And it's like, this is an easy one for them to say, oh, well, you've known about this for years, and now you're out of, out of ratio, and no fault of our own. And that's why we've continued, continued to ask Bob to show what the ratio looks like without the change, right? Because then it's, it's not even okay. It's, you know, it's half the, the number. So, it's, I, I just think it's important to make sure we, you know, we're.
Right. So, traditionally, we will try to have the board vote in the month of May on, on this, on the budget, because it has to be voted on by June, and we just want to leave a little leeway for anything. There's a quorum problem or anything like that. So, in light of that, those of you on the finance committee and also on the academic committee, and anybody else who has a particular question or interest in this, expect to hear from me offline in between meetings, because there's different line items we want to just get hammered out, so that we can give a, a full budget for everybody to review with plenty of time, and then, you know, get to, get to a vote. Okay?
The next meeting's going to be in three weeks or in four weeks? The next schedule would be May 17th, which is in three.
Yeah. I was actually going to suggest that the board consider moving back one week, just to give us a little bit more time. But I don't know if that works for everybody's schedule.
To the 24th of May weekend?
To the 24th, yeah. The day, the week before Memorial.
Oh.
This would also allow us to report on how the SED visit went.
Yeah.
On the 19th and 20th.
No objections to that.
I, I can't make any promises.
Okay.
In general?
No, no, on that particular. Generally, I, I, I'm also against it, but I'm willing.
Well, we certainly don't need.
We should be able to do it.
Yeah.
Might be, yeah, might be tough for me.
I'll, I'll be happy to, we, we can follow up here. This doesn't have to be decided right in this moment, but putting that out there. Thank you for raising that. I don't think there are any, any other questions for Bob. I know how busy you are, Bob. Thank you so much.
Thanks, I'll have a great evening.
Enjoy the Shvet. Bye. Okay. So, if there's nothing else on finance, I think, executive committee?
Yeah, so we were able to meet again, actually just yesterday, and had a good, robust kind of conversation about many things, including future, hopefully, board development, and we're gonna be reaching out to folks and just see what possibilities are available.
All right. Back to you again for the academic committee.
Yes. Well, that, we agree, we, also, that was just close to that Thursday of last week.
How many of you of us have separate days?
You know. And it's so neat to like, it's just so neat to, to, like, even the deep dive we were able to do on the data earlier today and the conversation around what that could mean for Spanish progress. And it's really exciting to hear the team talk about the academic data, the progress that's been made, and, and what, what comes next. So, we had a great conversation there. Good luck, although we don't need luck. Good effort tomorrow on the math exam. Good for you and everybody. Oh, and we did do a, a dive into summer, summer camp and the opportunity of summer rising. So, what does that do on the 4th?
Yeah. I believe it, it's gonna go in tomorrow. It didn't already go in today. So, yeah.
Great.
Um.
No, that, yeah, close it.
The only little point I would add is we also looked at the, at the staffing model and some of those details, and just of all the many details, just one I would call out, is we love our social worker, and we believe we need another one. So, we've added a second social worker to the model, and we're making trade-offs to allow that to happen, because it's a big part of our school, to be able to help students who are going through something, and, and sometimes even work with their families who might be going through something. So, but we'll have a lot more details about the staffing in the, in the final budget, and the, two of the committees have already heard the rundown of the different changes we're talking about.
Yeah, now that you mention that, there was a, a lot of exciting things in, like, increased academic support and associate teachers. So, I don't know if you want to share more about that now or in future meetings, it's like the more.
I think maybe I'll do an overview and we'll look at the whole budget. Yeah.
Good news.
All right. Board norms and development?
No updates there.
Okay. My.
More than you've said.
Correct.
My, my only point here would be, I know, Emily, you and I talked about a board self-assessment. And so, that'll be, I know, on the board's agenda by the end of the year, and I, I, hopefully by next month, we'll have more details on it.
Yeah, and just for the board or general public, this would be an opportunity. All public charter boards have to do this, with a self-assess our own functioning, our governance, our relationship with the school. And so, we're working on a process for that that we'll be sharing and reflect.
You like it?
You like it, one, though? Cultural continuous improvement goes on, yeah.
Perhaps we could have some board members come and attend our career week upcoming in May. So, we'll be reaching out to you.
Where they put the calendars on these things. You don't have to.
We will follow up with that, those dates and that opportunity. That would be great, yeah. All right, well, I don't know, we got bumped off the internet a time or two, but if we have any members of the public with us right now, our friend Amma Woods is online. Good evening, Amma. Would you care to share any comments tonight?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Okay, good. I was having a hard time. Um, I just, I just want to share some gratitude. I was able to. I was able to be a secret reader for the Haguades, which is my son's class, last week. And originally when I did it, I was like, I'm finally going to see the hallways and his work, which I was able to do. But I want to say the school culture. You know, sometimes as a parent, I question, did I make the right decision putting him here? But the school culture, it just, it was one of joy and love. And, you know, the kids were able to just have fun. And in my work, I deal with a lot of schools, I'm in and out of public schools, and school culture is big for me. And there was, there was just no fear. You know, kids were happy. And so I'm really appreciative of that opportunity. And I want to say thank you to everyone from the administration to the teachers. But thank you for that opportunity and also for loving on our young people and allowing them to be kids and have a love of learning.
Thanks to you.
We really appreciate that. That means a lot. Thanks for reading and for being so involved and for those kind words. And I know you will tell us if we're not doing something right. We appreciate that and we appreciate that you had this kind of experience too.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, see you later. All right. All right. Well, I believe that concludes our regular open session. As is our habit, I believe the board plans to go into executive session. And so there's some possible purposes listed on the screen for whoever wants to make the motion. And then just for anybody watching, we will, we will just go to a blank screen for as long as that takes and the board plans to only come back to adjourn the meeting. So there's, there's no reason to stay online, right?
In that case, I will move to, move to executive session to discuss a employment history matter as well as some personnel matters.
Okay.
I second. On the favor. Bye.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just trying to be. Get it done.
Get it done.
And, yeah, still recording.
Okay, we are back and I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded by David Estrada.
All in.
Good night everybody. Eight twelve, thank you.